Jeff Colton, boats, trails, hot bin, hauling boats.
Thank you, Monty.
You're actually shifting the lanes.
And if you, if there are cars.
That's going to be two-way traffic.
Are we on? We are, okay. I will call this Town of Isle Haven Board of Selectment meeting to order for Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Roll call, Tom Anthony, Lad Olson is absent, Dawn Young, Leslie Dyer, myself, Elizabeth Bonker, and Marjorie Stratton. Number two, approve agenda.
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor? Number three, approve the minutes from the October first, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
So moved.
So.
All in favor?
I'm staying.
Four, approve and sign treasures warrant, number sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Number five, communications.
I don't have any.
Did you want to, are you going to wait for your report to advertise the buckets, pails?
Yeah, I have other transfer station stuff.
Okay, you're going to wait for that, okay. Number six, speakers from the floor.
Doing good, Pam, we shot really.
I know, moving right along.
Not yet.
What are we waiting for?
I was looking for Gabe.
Oh, okay. Number seven, committee and departmental reports and appointments. A, downtown project.
That's what Gabe was going to do.
Right. Come back to it? Yeah, we can. I didn't know if Marjorie wanted to present, or if you'd prefer to wait for her.
Well, she just texted me and said that I'll be there.
Okay, we can move on to B, seven B, and come back to A when she gets on. It's all right with everybody?
Yeah.
B, public works.
Hi.
Hi. Hi, Millie.
So, I've been talking to Dan Vicford, who has also been talking to the church, and as you know, there's been an ongoing flood issue with the vestry and such due to the walkway and our catch basin being prolonged depth and such. He came up with an idea of adding a two-foot-by-four-foot box grate right in front of the steps where the step entrances on the road with a pipe going from the box into our catch basin to drain. And he's fairly comfortable with the thought that that also would put a riser in our catch basin to bring it up two inches, and then backfilling that with liquid tar and such. He's barely confident that that will cut down tremendously on the drainage issues that goes into the vestry and hopefully stop a bunch of that water before it goes down in there. I have a little quick sketch of it, but I don't know, it's not like beautiful, it was just very quickly done.
Makes sense.
But he's working right now on an estimate for us on that. That's not something that we have the equipment to do it with, but he is willing to do it. We're just waiting for an estimate, he was going to write one up, just haven't seen it yet. I talked to him Thursday, and he said he would have it sometime this week. And I would, I would like to move forward with it once we find out the price. He doesn't think it's going to be more than a three, four-hour job tops. So I don't think it will be terribly expensive, and if it cuts back on the water issue there, I think it's worth doing.
So does, is all the paving, is that?
Yeah, yeah, because the catch basin was placed, and then they paved, and everything on that, so water doesn't go in there well. Plus, it's also passed and up in the road a little bit, it's past the area that where water just comes running off the road and straight down there. So, you know, I think he knows pretty well what he's talking about, and I think that we should go with it.
See what the price is, and we'll go from there, I guess.
Yep, yeah, I don't think it will be bad, and he said he could be, he could probably do it mid to late November. Well, you know, that's really all I have, unless anybody has any questions about the reports.
I've noticed that the water's still backing up in front of the bank, so whatever grate is supposed to run into is also blocked.
Yep, yep. There's a few of them that I think the pipes are just all in.
Do we have, is there anybody that could come out with a camera, run a camera down through and see exactly what the issue is?
I don't know if you could get a camera down through.
He forgot about the meeting.
I think, I mean, I think the way they've been broken, because there's several of them that have broken.
Yeah.
And I think that the way they, the way they've broken, they are probably full. I'm not sure if even spending the money to put a camera down through there is worth it, considering that that's part of the downtown project, replacing all of those.
That's kind of revamping that, trying to figure that out too.
Right, but we're working on that, and that part hasn't changed as far as changing his water drainage and all of that put in, so.
We don't have that equipment, you know.
No, no, and I think bringing somebody out here would be rather costly to just to find out that it doesn't work, and there's nothing we can do to fix it until it's torn up.
No. Okay.
We're still putting together the total cost of the paving project. Millie's done a great spreadsheet, but there's still bills coming in, so it's not come, that isn't finalized yet.
They're still doing well, though.
Yeah.
So, Lad forgot about the meeting, I told him we're almost will be over by the time he gets here, chances I will be done. Lad? Yes. So I told him he's all set, we have a quorum, so. Gabe is, are you still?
I know, I'm done.
I'm sorry.
Has anybody else had questions?
No.
Nope.
Gabe's here, on deck, so, Gabe?
Hi, hi, thank you, sorry I'm late. Yeah, just wanted to come on and give some quick updates on our status, and Marjorie and Pam and Millie have been, you know, attending our weekly project meetings along with Mike Ames from Main Water and Brent, of course, from Waterden Current. And so just where we're at is we submitted the de-scoping request to EDA, the Economic Development Administration. I haven't heard back from them yet, just on sort of next steps, or even just need to confirm with them that they received everything and that what we sent is sufficient. And what has to happen now is, so that, just to clarify, that what we presented to them was requesting that they give us the same amount of money that they have, that we've been, that we're in agreement to receive from them, but that we would remove the stormwater portion of the project. And also, where we landed with the water district was to reduce the scope of their project as well, so rather than nine hundred feet of the water main, we would do three hundred and thirty feet of the water main, and that takes us from High Street east across the two bridges, and ending up on the, on the easterly side of the second bridge, so by that bridge that goes by the tide water. And that would address the two most vulnerable parts of the water main, which are the, you know, exposed parts of the water main. And then, of course, the piece under the tide water is also extremely iffy because this metal I-beam that is intended to support the main going across underneath there is, has rotted away. So that's corroded and no longer effective in doing what it needs to do to support the main. So those two exposed areas would be addressed by the, still by the reduction in scope. So we, that's what we submitted as a project, and we just basically had to present our case, why we were requesting the de-scoping, and also, you know, that we could still meet our project goals. And the other component is that, you know, we were work, we're still, you know, trying to submit a USDA application to pay for the stormwater. And then we did speak with the water district when we met with the, with the district last week, just that, you know, we should be thinking about other funding opportunities to do the rest of the main, as originally planned. So, you know, we'll keep that conversation open, and if there are some opportunities that come up that seem like they make sense for the district, you know, we'll certainly try to support that effort in, you know, being able to actually do the rest of the main. So right now, we have to wait until EDA gives us the thumbs up, hoping that they do. They'll likely come back with some additional questions. They have like an internal review committee that has to go through the request, and I'm not sure, you know, where they're going to land or what additional, you know, documents or changes we'll need to, we'll need to take care of. But it's a kind of a wait and see, and the same thing with USDA. It will be a little bit of a wait and see, and everything is just, you know, one, one step at a time. And that's, that's kind of what I've got. I don't know if, you know, Marjorie or Millie have other updates, just based from your perspectives on where things are at.
On the phase two, we did get an update on the two parking lot designs, as well as the boat ramps. It's not the finished version, we're still asking for comments from our group, and, but we did receive those.
Yeah, and to that end, you know, we will, we will need to, you know, bring that to the board for the, you know, the final sign-off when we're, when we're like sort of ready to, to have you guys, you know, make sure it's what, what we, what we want to go forward with. So we're just trying to get it to the place where the project team and the stakeholders that are using those, you know, the infrastructure the most are in agreement with, with what we're presenting or what we're, what the designs are, and then we'll bring it to you when we're ready to move forward. So, I mean, I wish I had some like exciting news. I guess the only good news is like, you know, we haven't given up, and there's, we're, you know, there are these paths forward, but it's still very much wait and see.
Thank you, Gabe.
All right, I'm going to, I have to hop off for another meeting, but thank you all. I'll, I'll talk to you soon, thank you.
Thanks, Gabe.
Bye. All right. Seven C, resignation from the Parks Commission. Peter Richards is, has resigned, so we have an opening on that committee. Sorry to see him go, and thank you, Peter, for all of your help through the years. He's been on the Commission, Parks for a long time, he worked with Boating for a long, long time, and he's been a great, great help to us, so we will miss him, but I'm sure whoever comes on will be equally excited about it. Their enthusiasm, we have an enthusiasm meter before you can. So, anyway. Oh, nothing on the old business. Interesting. Number nine, new business. Vinyl Haven Land Trust pilot, Andrea, hi.
Thank you, I'm Andrea Hogan, I'm with the Vinyl Haven Land Trust, and thank you guys for the opportunity to speak tonight. Normally, when we cut our payment in lieu of taxes, we just mail it in with a letter, but tonight I thought I'd come in and speak to you guys directly and give you the opportunity to ask any questions. So to introduce, we hold thirty-three properties in fee. That means that Vinyl Haven Land Trust owns thirty-three properties. We have an additional thirty-seven that are in easement, but for the purposes of the pilot, I'll be talking about the ones that we own. As a land trust, we are a not-for-profit, and so we are eligible to not pay taxes on the property taxes on the properties that we own. That said, we choose instead to make a pilot payment, a payment in lieu of taxes to the town. So with the inception of Scoop Park, none of our properties have development or buildings on them. And on Scoop Park, we do pay the taxes on that. So to be clear, for the one that we have, one that we do have the buildings on, we have, we host island sale out of the little shed, and then we have our offices, we do pay property taxes on those. The rest of them don't have any development. We ask people to avoid bird nesting islands during the nesting season, but otherwise, all of the properties that we own are open to the public, and most of them have trails that our staff maintains. We have a little over twenty miles of trails in total. We, it, sorry, lost my train of thought. So our annual pilot payment, since each parcel is undeveloped and publicly available, we calculate our payment based on the state's open space current land use program. Under this program, any property that is permanently protected, forever walled, with public access, is eligible for up to a ninety-five percent reduction of its value. We apply that criteria that would be used by the town's assessor, determining the percentage, but we go a step further in our payments. For any property where the calculated taxable amount would fall below a hundred dollars, we round up to a minimum of a hundred dollars. That increases our payment by almost a thousand dollars. So to be clear, all the properties that we have, we calculate what they would be worth with the open space applied, because they're eligible for that, and then anything that doesn't come up to a hundred, we pay a hundred. So in the end, if all these properties were still privately owned, you would get almost a thousand dollars less if they were, if all other things were equal. So we pay a little bit extra. This practice, looking at it another way, if all the properties owned by VLT were still, I already did that. Because we choose to make this pilot payment, this year you will receive thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. And that, I understand, goes entirely into the parks. Correct? Okay. In addition, we offer programs to the school, and we support the town in a couple of different ways, so I thought it was important to point those out, even though they're kind of extra to our pilot payment. Last year, we put about seventy-five hundred dollars into the planning on Armbrass Park, and we continue to support that by writing grants and hopefully helping to keep that project moving forward. We put almost sixteen thousand dollars into school programs and summer camps, partnering with PI, VSAC, we brought in Tanglewood Hurricane Island Center, we sent the middle and the high schools out there and the teachers last year, we brought in Chawonki, and we sponsored two weeks of scams. So that's where we're at, and I have your check. I'm saving a stamp. So there you go, thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Do you guys have any questions? I know I seem a little scattered, but I'm ready to field them. Go ahead, Dawn.
How many acres are involved?
We protect over twenty-two hundred acres.
Is that just the fee property?
That's between the fee and the easements.
And the easements, okay.
It is?
Yeah, it's great.
Any other questions?
My dog and I enjoy the trails very much.
I'm glad. I love when I run into people with dogs out there.
Oh, she's, yeah, she loves it.
Have you ever been on one of our dog walks?
I haven't, yet.
Ah, you should join, there's, it's pretty lively.
She would have a blast, she loves her dog, she has, yeah. I love Australian Shepherds.
We'll watch them in, do we have them?
Yeah. Well, certainly, anybody that, that you talk to that walk the trails, enjoy them and have a lot of compliments for VLT, so as always, stewardship is important, and doing a good job. And the new steward is really nice.
He certainly, he's been with us just over a year, and it was trial by fire after the storms. Perry Creek had over thirty trees across the trails, but just Perry Creek alone. It's been a challenge, but he's, he's been up to it, so.
And we appreciate, the Parks Commission really appreciates that he's with us, working with us as a liaison to VLT, because you do maintain, VLT maintains Mountain, Mellow Mountain for the town.
Yep.
Which is a huge help. And, and Tom is, I think he'll have a lot of good ideas, and he will help any project that he can, he has volunteered, help us, so really appreciate that, thank you.
He's been a great addition to the team.
Yeah, he's a good, nice guy.
Anybody else, any questions? All right, well, thank you guys for your partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Always helpful to have checks coming in. Nine B, Main State Ferry Service Advisory Board update.
So I attended a special meeting they had on October tenth. It was outside of the regular quarterly meetings that the ferry advisory board has, and I just, I made some notes about my takeaway. I did give you a copy of what they handed out, what they called a two thousand twenty-four strategic update and emphasis areas. One of the things that, and this was Commissioner Van Note, he was at this meeting, he wanted to address the advisory board members. He talked about more communication with the islands, the employees, island management, legislators, as well as the transportation committee. He talked about having short-term and long-term goals. Of course, one of the goals is to run the boats with increased reliability, which we would all enjoy. They intend to end the Seaworthy contract when it's appropriate. So when they had the highest level of cancellations, Main State Ferry Service did contract with the company called Seaworthy to bring more people in, and I, I believe that it did help. We're still having a few cancellations, but not as many. They anticipate, this was the big takeaway at that meeting, that they're still anticipating increased costs, and that will mean another rate increase. And they're anticipating another rate increase June of two thousand twenty-five, and they're going to begin that process. So we'll, I'm sure that we'll get some notices soon on that, because that doesn't seem that far away. In terms of emergency services, I know that we've all heard those, there have been a series of meetings among the islands about this very large emergency boat, you know, that, that was, those meetings were initiated by the emergency services in the state of Maine. I think many people thought that they were initiated by the Main State Ferry Service, but that was incorrect. So what the ferry service is saying now is they definitely do want us, they want to get out of making emergency runs, but they would rather, instead of buying into this project that we've all heard about, their idea is just to buy an emergency boat for at least three of the islands, North Haven, Vinyl Haven, and Swans. So it would be a smaller, a much smaller boat that would make emergency runs and wouldn't require, you know, these three or four paramedics that, you know, that we've all heard about for this big seventy-five-foot boat that was anticipated, and the two million dollar, over two million dollar operating cost. So I don't have a lot of details. They talked about one boat for each island, a smaller targeted boat. So, you know, stay tuned, I'm sure we'll hear more about that. They want to work on the ticketing and make that more user-friendly, I guess they've gotten a lot of complaints. And as far as parking, they are still looking at adding a parking deck, if you will, in Rockland. I know that they've started working on the upgrades to the Vinyl Haven parking lot, the Main State Ferry Service parking lot, that is. They started, they've started to work on the permitting, so that's starting to get going too. Well, anyway, those were my notes and my takeaway from that meeting. I don't know if you have any questions, if you do, that I could ask Bill Gary or Commissioner Van Note?
Couple of meetings ago, Al had indicated that they were going to work on some numbers so we could see what the actual revenue and expenses were associated with each boat, anything in there?
I think I did get those, I'm sorry. I think Alan did send me those. Did you want me to?
Please, I think we'd all probably like to see those.
That was from Alan.
Barker.
Alan Barker, yeah. Okay. I'll look for those and forward them to everybody. Anything else, any other questions about that? Certainly an interesting report, interesting meeting.
Yeah.
A lot of information.
I know, I wanted to attend, and I ended up having a meeting, so I couldn't, but.
Any other questions about that?
Stay tuned.
Yeah, I guess that's.
One last question. One of the other meetings we had, there was a lot of discussion about the Spear going to Islesborough for extended period of time, or they worked on, did additional work on the Islesborough boat. They talked about putting the, I can't remember, the other, one of the other, the Cobras to the Cobra on Vinyl Haven on the seven o'clock. If they're going to do that, they really should have that in Rockland and keep the Thompson here, or if it is a staffing issue, they could send the Thompson to Islesborough and keep the Spear here.
I'll have to clarify that, because when I asked him the question, I think the question was about the three-day period when we were going to get the Henry Lee, and it was just a, a small turnaround.
Yeah, that was an easy one, the big one was concerning the Islesborough boat, that was the extended time.
So what's going to happen during this extended period of time is what we want to know.
Yeah, they're, they're taking the Margaret Chase Smith off again.
Yeah.
And they were trying to figure out which boat they were going to replace, replace it with.
Well, we did, the memo from last meeting says the Spear will be replaced by the Philbrook when the Margaret Chase Smith goes into the yard.
That doesn't make any sense at all.
That makes no sense. Did they mention anything about doing away with line cars, Marj?
Oh, he said no, they have no intention of doing that.
Okay, I was just wondering where they're squishing the lines together?
Yeah.
For this wonderful new parking arrangement?
That's what Bill Gary said, he said no, they have no intention of eliminating that process.
Okay, good to know.
Anything else about the ferry? Questions, anybody else up? Ten, report of town manager.
I am working with, oh, what's the oil company? I was Vinyl, Vinyl Energy, on a, on prepaying for our heating oil, kerosene, propane, and road diesel. The prices are down quite a bit right now, so I feel like if we prepaid about fifty thousand dollars for all of these commodities, that we'd do better. I, I don't know about you, but I feel like all these prices tend to go up in the fall, so if I. So if I buy in now at this lower price, unless there's any strong injunction.
No, I think we should lock in while the price is low.
They'll go up after election.
Hmm?
They'll go up after election.
I think so too. So I'm working with the staff at Vinyl Energy.
Yeah, I think you should definitely take advantage.
We always used to do that in the past.
I mean, it's money that's in the budget. It's just that I'm gonna be prepaying so I can get the lower price.
Right.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. And then Millie and I have been working on, as we discussed last week, the transfer station. We're applying for a transfer station license. I'm not sure why DEP has never gotten after us. I mean, the, we closed the landfill, I think, in the late nineties before I came here. And they've certainly been out doing inspections and no one from DEP ever said anything to us about. I mean, I, I guess I've, the only thing I remember is Janet Anderson from Aliceboro called me a long, long time ago and she said, well, what are you entering into this question for your transfer station report, you know, your annual report? And I said, gee, Janet, I don't know what you mean. I don't, we don't have a transfer station license. And she, and that was, so that was my first, uh,
Uh-huh.
that I'd even ever heard of it. But anyway, so we're in the process of applying for this license uh, with the help of Waterden Corin. And, um, we also received, uh, what did they call that? A solid waste facility site assessment report. They were out here in May and did a report. So, um, Millie and I, Millie's done a lot of work. I'm, I'm not gonna take the credit. Um, we've been trying to bring some of the things into compliance. Some of it is just as simple as putting a label on something that's a hazardous waste or a universal waste. Some of it is, you know, it's very simple. Other things are more complex. So I just wanted to to know that we continue to work on that. And we also, uh, our transfer station staff will be required to get training on DEP regulations. We have something set up on a day in November. Millie's gonna be going to the Maine Resource Recovery Association meeting in, at the end of October. We really, we need to bring ourselves into compliance with all these rules and regulations. So we're working hard on all of that. I don't know if you have any questions about that process or?
Was there any, any major obstacles that they found, stuff that we?
Well, it's.
Other than train, I mean, training would be obvious.
The burning and the ash pile is gonna be a big hurdle.
We need.
I think the burning is gonna be pretty easy to resolve. Is the ash pile.
The ash.
What we do with the ash afterwards, because we don't know what's in it.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think, I don't know if you, can you think of anything else that's a big? I mean.
No, I, I mean, there's a lot of education needed.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good, yeah.
And then it's just a matter of doing that.
Check the box and say, yes, I've been training.
Yeah, yeah, training and then weekly reports, quarterly reports, annual reports.
Oh, right, and we're, um, reinvigorating the compost program. I mean, I mean, it's been ongoing, you know, my household takes advantage of it, but we did order a hundred more of these compost buckets. This time, we are gonna have to sell them. Previously, when we ordered these, they were given away because they were purchased with grant funds. But, um, we're gonna sell them for fifteen dollars and try to do some education on. It's really, you know, boils down to money. I mean, that kind of waste is heavy and wet. And it just adds to our tipping fees and our costs. So our, our transfer station budget is almost five hundred thousand dollars. Um, we do collect some in per bag fees, but any way that we can get things out of the waste stream will be beneficial. So just trying to educate people to get this stuff out of the waste stream.
It's also important to mention that keeping our, our, um, trailers dryer.
Right, yeah.
There's opportunities there that, uh, we need to definitely work a little harder on and on this. It's a challenge. If it's leaking, the boat will turn it away. It's happened.
Yeah.
And that just puts us behind.
It costs us a lot of money when the boat, when the boat refuses the trailers, yeah.
A couple of blocks under the frame of the trailer so the grain's able to go in.
We're trying everything.
Was there any progress on getting Waste Management to get us some better containers?
I've talked with both Scott at Thomason Recycling and my contact at Waste Management, Peter LaChapelle. And what I'm trying to do is get them together, because apparently it's all about the delivery, you know, and how these different containers get from Norwich Walk to, um, where is it that Thomason Recycling is? They're more local.
Where are they? I was thinking, was that Scarborough?
Scarborough, Portland area.
Ish.
That's where Thomason Recycling is located?
I think that's where the trailers go, where they dump them.
They go to the Waste Management, might even be Westbrook.
No, they go to Norwich Walk as Waste Management.
I mean, I, no, I mean.
Ecomane?
Yes, thank you.
They do go there, yes.
What's the status on junk cars, getting those off the island?
Well, what's happening now is that private people are taking them. I mean, we do assist with some of our equipment. Uh, Tim McAvoy has been taking junk cars. So he simply asked us for assistance in loading his trailer, so we have done that. The bunkers have offered to take junk cars, so we haven't been asking Thomason Recycling.
Yeah, so we're staying on top of that and then we're moving them.
I mean, I don't, well.
Everything that we have right now, with the exception of one vehicle, is going to be used by the fire department, MMS, for training in a few weeks.
Extircation training.
Extircation training. They're gonna cut them up. And then after they cut them up, they're gonna cut them up a little more maybe. Um, and then my bunker, I believe, is going to take the.
Right.
Pieces and and take them off the island.
Okay, so it's cool.
That's a great idea.
I love it, yeah.
Yeah.
When I was at AAA, we used to have a, used to have a junk car that we use for for rollover training.
Mm-hmm.
And we, we keep it for a couple of years until we've got crushed in so bad that we couldn't.
We're gonna demolish these fairly quickly because they cut the roof off, take the, you know, take everything out of it. So I will be on site with Vaco as well, so make sure all of our sites are cleaned up very well.
Bring all the foods out of them first.
Has to be done anyway before we go.
Oh, yeah, yes.
I think the fire department actually offered to take care of that. They're gonna do that prior to.
Another good exercise for them. Uh, anything on Ecomane with the cardboard from bait?
Oh, yeah, I answered that question.
Oh, Tom wasn't here last meeting.
The problem is twofold. Kenny says that it is contaminated and we get raided, every load that we send to Ecomane, the recycle loads, get raided. And the more contaminated they are, the more we get charged. So there's that. And Ken doesn't think it's clean enough to put into the recycling. But then he said also, we don't have the capacity to put it in the recycle. It would fill up too fast.
Right.
So that was the answer that I got from Ken.
Okay. But, okay, start. A place to start. That's a place to start.
Okay.
When that question would be to Ecomane. What would be considered too contaminated if they had a sample of some of these boxes? And then maybe potentially we could work with the lobster buyers on the waterfront, because I know that more of them has a little piece of land down there. Maybe we could put another compactor down there and add the capacity and get the stuff out of the demo and make it easier and less expensive for lobster buyers. Now, I'm, this is just me hypothesizing, but I suspect that if we could find a way to make it more economical for the lobster buyers to get rid of this cardboard, it would be more economical for the town and it wouldn't go into the general waste stream. It would go into the recycling side.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, honestly, um, we pay more in tipping fees now for recycling than we do for tipping fees. We pay seventy-five dollars a ton to get rid of solid waste and demo and we pay a hundred and ten dollars a ton to get rid of recycling.
That's interesting.
Isn't it?
And then if the recycling's contaminated.
But you can't, yeah, it's even more.
Jumps.
They do give us, at the end of the year, they do a calculation and give us, us, um, a refund. But, I mean, one year it was only eighteen hundred dollars. And.
That's, that's an intr- in, in my mind, the recycling would be, the tipping fees would be lower.
It used to be free.
Yeah.
But it's just not, it's not like that anymore.
So there's no.
There's no incentive, no. And, I mean, can I stop the recycling program?
Morally, no.
No.
No, it would be wrong to do that.
Because people still wanna recycle because they think it really gets recycled. And I'm just gonna stop right there.
Yes, good.
That's a good place to stop.
I was gonna say something more, but I think, no, I think we should leave it there.
Yeah.
Um, recycling is, is good.
The problem with recycling is Major Matthew was China and they they closed the door. Everyone said the same problem. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, Ecomane had put a, a thing, um, like, was it an email? I don't know where that went now, but it doesn't matter, about cautioning people about lithium batteries after the fire in Orton. Um, just to make sure that you dispose of those batteries properly and don't just throw them in the trash, you know? That's real important, because that was really serious.
Yeah, it was bad.
You know, so.
Well, it didn't help that there's a bunch of trash in there, multiple tons of trash.
Well, it was left, a lot of trash was from Perk. Now it's owned by a different company. But anyway, just thought I'd mention that about the lithium.
It's a real issue.
Good, good. But, I mean, if somebody throws it in the trash, you don't, you don't know that it's in there, but I think it's important that we put a notice at the transfer station, a sign maybe saying.
So just direct people on how to dispose of them properly, maybe show them we have a mechanism.
Yeah, just make, you know, put a notice, just saying lithium batteries, you know.
Go here, yeah.
Many towns in, of course, may be fine if found in the, in trash and can be identified to a person, which a lot of times it's easy to do, because there's a piece of mail in there with the name on it.
Right. Which is another thought about cars on the ferry with lithium batteries, electric cars. They can't put those fires out if they catch on fire.
Push bolt on board.
Put them on the cabal or on the stern. Put them on the stern.
Don't let them on the boat.
Because that could be, yeah, okay, people, get out of your car, which I, that's unrealistic, obviously, but.
Wow.
You know, it's a scary thought when you think about it. So, you know, when they find something good, there always has to be something bad about it too, so. Any more dump talk?
Trash talk.
Wanna trash talk some more, guys? No? Okay. Oh, where's that big hook?
Gong for the dong.
Yeah, the dong.
Where's the dong?
Patrick, you're done? Thank you for the advertisement about the compost pails.
Out there in TV.
Facebook line. And number eleven, yes. Next.
Cheaper than Amazon.
Cheaper than, cheaper than Amazon.
I priced them out.
Okay, that's good to know. That is good to know.
They're about twenty bucks on Amazon, so there you go.
Good. Thank you. Report of members. Tom, Don?
Yes. I have a question on the status of the Wetworth property by Paige Evans. Anything happening there?
There's nothing that we can do. I mean, the bank owns it. We got it boarded up and cleaned up the yard. I think somebody from the bank came out and asked to meet with our code enforcement officer, but they just went and looked at it and then, so I don't know what the result of that meeting was.
I saw it secondhand that there was, they were thinking about condemnation of the property, condemning it.
Who, the bank?
I'm not sure who it was that, you know, that made the statement. I heard it secondhand.
I have no idea. I haven't heard anything about it.
It is a mess.
Oh, I don't disagree. Um.
The town doesn't own it though.
It's a difficult situation. Yeah, we don't own it. Of course, the owner had passed away. There are some children that could step forward, as far as I know, but they're unable to. I mean, it really should just be demolished and the bank should put it up, um, should foreclose and just put it up for auction. But we don't, the town doesn't control that.
Because there is a septic or leach field that basically is probably five feet at most from the house and it, and the, and the property line is another five feet. So it's got a basically a, a sewage issue that is unenough, which is a serious hazard.
I think Faye's been dealing with that.
What's that?
Faye was dealing with that. I'm sorry to speak out of turn.
No, you're fine.
She was dealing with that last, two, two years ago, I believe.
Yeah. That has been, I thought that was in foreclosure years ago.
Yeah.
But I don't know what happened.
No, it's still, um, we still have it as, um, I can't remember her first name, Wentworth, is the owner and the USDA pays the tax bill. So the town has no issue with it. I can try calling the same people that I talked to a few months ago and see, see if there, anything's happening.
I'm assuming the water meter's been removed and the curb stop turned off? That should be something we might, I might wanna work into that.
I don't know. No, they wouldn't have water, would they?
And they must have water.
There's no sewer down there, but the water line goes, the main goes down.
Oh, it goes down to the corner. Water goes to, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
Uh, I'll call those, uh, numbers that I had and see if they have anything new. I mean, do you want me to say, you know, look, we need to stabilize in this property and do you wanna pay for that? I mean, they paid the eighteen hundred dollars that we spent cleaning up the yard. I don't know what they're intending.
Well, there's no, there will be no more sewer going into the tank or the leach field, so. I mean, it will.
Yeah. What's in this? What's the issue?
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing you can do about that, just, just, unless the bank wanted to pay to have it pumped. Oh, that's.
I just don't think we should leave it. And then I'm sure what the options are. Unless we have any, really, unless.
Well, I mean, there is that dangerous building procedure that you can follow. But the, but what you're doing with that is you're saying, well, look, if you don't take care of this, then we are, we'll, we'll take care of it and we'll send you the bill. But then if we, for instance, if we hire somebody to demolish the building, where is that money going to come from? I don't have an appropriation of funds to pay somebody to do that. So you'd really have to get the money in place before you started that procedure, in my mind, anyway. I mean, because that's the threat that you make. You say, okay, look, USDA, you need to do something with this property. And you, so you take these legal steps because you feel it's a dangerous building. But ultimately, you're saying, we're gonna take care of this and send you the bill, but you'd still have to have money to pay somebody to demolish it.
And then you have legal fees if they decide not to pay.
When you demolish it, you have to get it off the island and a lot of it's gonna be hazardous.
Right. And each time, I, I've done the dangerous building. Right, and each time, I've done the dangerous building thing a couple of times, and each time, we used an attorney to help us, because it's a very, it's a very strict timeline that you have to follow and, you know, specific letters and notices that you have to send to the owners.
I think the first step is to call USDA and find out what their plan is, because that sounds like a lot of time and money at the town. I mean, as much of an eyesore and unhealthy situation that it might be, it's not owned by the town. So, I mean, maybe they have a plan. Maybe they're gonna put it under foreclosure and auction it off. Who knows?
Well, what they told, I'm sorry.
Right.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What they told me was that they haven't foreclosed on anything in US, this is USDA. They haven't foreclosed on anything in Maine for a long time, because the rules are so cumbersome. That's what they told me. So... I can check in with the people that I talked to last time, and they did come through with paying us for what we did do.
Which was a surprise.
I...
I should have built more. Oh, dear. Dawn, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Leslie?
Nothing.
And I think I'm all set for now.
So moved.
On to 12, motion to return.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Andrea, thank you.
Thanks, Andrea.